Nope, we're still waiting for two guys. We're gonna do somebody asking yourself first. And then, um... We're speaking of pleasure, pleasure. Okay, you ready to go?
Yes. Uh, wait, uh, Israel, are you gonna start?
It's started.
It's started? Thank you. Alright.
Okay, you need to be ready, I'll call this in due order. It is now 7:02 PM. Please rise and pledge allegiance. A pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. Until they come up with what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please find your seat. Yes, we're gonna have to add some numbers later when they come back, when they come.
Chairman Friedman?
Here.
Member Cornelius?
Here.
Member Glover?
Here.
Ed Hockford, Friedman.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, um, I wrote the minutes. We're gonna approve, make the motion to approve the minutes. It's, uh, it's all four of us. So I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the body war meeting from Tuesday, October 28th. All in favor? Alright, okay. So it's done. Um, I've done item number five. I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing, to adjourn the continued public hearing for Shears, Marion, Rockland County, at 46 Campbell, to the Thursday, January 22nd, 2026, body war meeting. Um, we find the subject pursuant to the email, which is pulled down, dated November 5th, 2025. On second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, let's move to this. Okay. Where's the one for a store? I don't even have any for a store.
Do I not put it there?
I have two copies of the one for, uh, for the... Okay, this one, uh, who, uh...
No, it's, uh...
Rhonda Smith, yeah.
Uh, um, it's an email. I apologize, it's an email. I could tell you the date.
You have it?
Received from Oshie Consequences.
Oh, well, I, yeah, we got a copy here, yeah. Okay. No, no, so I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn the continued public hearing for condition. I still have two buttes road to the, okay, to the Thursday, January 22nd, 2026 body war meeting pursuant to email. From Oshie Consequences, dated November 6th. On second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was meant for the second, yeah. Okay. Now we have two requests for extensions. Again, out of the map, the CHPD, the Central UTA wants a one-day, ninety-day extension, one ninety-day extension from May 22nd.
That was the, the date of the approval.
So ninety days will take them to August 22nd. It's now November. Why would we help them? They only need two.
They only ask for one ninety day. They, they, you initially get, once it's signed, you have, uh, thank you. You have a hundred and eighty days?
Yes. We can approve two extensions.
Which is six months, and you're allowed to approve two ninety-day extensions.
Sure, I'll take it in.
What's the holdup?
County Highway. Uh, I think you should have received a letter dated November 4th from Civil Tech, our engineers, stating, uh, that they're currently working with County Highway Department to finalize the sidewalk design on Cherry Lane.
If I calculate correctly, you look like four days till this extension expires, no?
No, no, we have, we have, we're still working on our original hundred and eighty days from, from May 22nd.
Ah, which expires in four days.
Right.
So you want another ninety, ah, I get it, okay. So, you're requesting one?
If you're willing to give me two ninety-day extensions now so that I don't have to come back, that's fine.
Is that okay, Ron?
It's no problem approving.
Well, just the Rockland County Highway Department, they may need more. So I'd just do what we can do.
Okay. So if you're okay with that, um, I'll make the motion to approve two ninety-day extensions for the site plan approval. Um, that was originally granted on May 22nd of this year for Central UTA of Muncie, which is a 236 Cherry Lane. On second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, see you at all. It's May 22nd.
Chairman, you might want to appoint, um, Israel.
Oh, okay. Have they coming?
I don't know, no one told me they were not.
They're not coming? Okay, so, um, I'll make the motion to, uh, to approve, Mr. Friedman, appoint, sorry, appoint Mr. Friedman as a voting on the fifth night. It's not a fantasy meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The other votes are good, he was, yeah, don't have to do it again with him.
Well, we have three in here, so...
Just wanna make sure.
Okay, and here, this is a paperwork for... That's here.
The last one is for 454.
Yeah, so I have that here. So their site plan approval was when?
They already have received one ninety day that went to December 17th. And, um, just so you know what the issue is at hand is Muncie Fire Department, I put it in an email to all of you.
Yes, sure.
They saw, I guess their truck isn't gonna fit, so then they made some changes to the plans, which they were viewing. Now they're looking at the height. I've been emailing them, like, every couple of days. They did respond today saying we should have something shorter.
Okay, that's, that's you? That's the last outstanding item before the, uh...
It's already almost signed by the mayor and everything.
I know, it's just...
You have to march 17, hopefully you got... Yeah, well, uh, if you have one, something you have planned for that.
Hopefully it'll be signed next week.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, second ninety-day extension for the spot, site plan and special permit, which was originally approved on January 23rd of this year, for Base Medrich, 454 South River Road. On second?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or four to zero, that goes over. Okay, I think it's a, that's what it meant. Fine, okay. The next item on the agenda is a workshop for 267 Cherry Lane Realty Corporation, and that's for a proposed school of religious instruction dormitory, and, um... Mr. Emanuel, that's yours, right?
Yes, sir.
This is the gym down there. Okay.
Is it there? Alright. Good evening, everybody. For the record, I am Emanuel, Emanuel Law, PC in the city. I am the attorney for the applicant. Joe Switz.
Do you have this one also?
That was the work for those.
Wow, that's for two of us. Okay.
Uh, so this is the first time that we're appearing in front of a board, and I appreciate the time. So, uh, as the chairman mentioned briefly, this is the existing Rockland, I put a training center a couple, a couple of doors down. Uh, the training center has been there for a long time, probably, probably fifty years. I remember going there as a young man and trying to do something athletic.
And it shows, Mr. Emanuel.
Trying to do something athletic, it didn't work. It didn't work. Uh, in any event, uh, it's in an R40 zoning district. It's got a lot area of about ten point six acres, so a good-sized lot. Uh, the existing building is, uh, about sixteen thousand seven hundred square feet. It's, it's a gym. Uh, it's, it's got a, it's got a gym area, it's got racquetball courts, it's got showers, locker rooms, you know, all the stuff that you would associate with gym. Uh, one of the reasons why it stayed that way, uh, is because there was a restrictive covenant on, on the site. Uh, way back when it was built, uh, and I frankly do not know the reason why, um, but way back when it was originally approved, uh, they put a restrictive covenant on there, limiting the use of the property to commercial recreation. And stayed that way for a long, long time, until this past summer. And in July of this year, uh, the applicant and the village, uh, came to an agreement and modified the covenant to allow a school with up to one hundred and fifty students. And so that is what we are here for. Uh, as a, this is, uh, here for a secondary school, uh, for, uh, older boys and young men. It is going to be a residential school, and so all of the students will live on-site in a dormitory that is being proposed. So you're not going to have school buses running back and forth all day, uh, all day, uh, every morning, every afternoon, uh, five or six days a week. The traffic will be absolutely minimal, uh, just for staff, uh, to, uh, come in and out, uh, and for whatever deliveries they might need. So there's very, very minimal traffic over there. Maximum enrollment, uh, will be about a hundred, will be a hundred and fifty, and it's restricted by the covenant. Uh, and they hope to achieve that after about three years of operation. Uh, also at maximum enrollment, they're expecting ten full-time equipment staff and, uh, and faculty. Uh, as I said, all the students will be required to live in the dormitory, but only students and resident advisors will be allowed to live in the dormitory. There's not gonna be, no outsiders will be allowed. The dormitory will be built, uh, uh, and designed for those hundred and fifty students and RAs. Uh, there's no onsite food prep, uh, proposed, everything will be brought in, there'll be a warming kitchen. Um, uh, there's onsite recreation, uh, there will be vestiges of the gym that will be left. Uh, and, uh, it's a rather large parcel of property, and so there'll be, uh, some grassed areas that'll probably be used as in football playing fields. Uh, this is a special permit use. Uh, and it complies with all of the bulk requirements with the exception of parking spaces. Uh, your code would require eighty-seven parking spaces, we are proposing seventy-seven, and, uh, pursuant to the parking study that you have, seventy-seven is many more than we actually need. We are projected to need thirteen.
Do you need one variance?
Uh, so we would need one variance. Uh, I, your code has a provision allowing a waiver of twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
And I, in, in preparing for it, I noticed that my narrative said that we were not eligible for that waiver, and I kept, I took another look back, and I was a little perplexed as to why I wrote that. Uh, so I'll take another look, and if we can do this with just a waiver from the planning board and avoid a trip to the ZB.
Any ideas?
We will hopefully avoid that.
Eight, is the requirement eighty-seven, and you have seventy-eight?
Uh, seventy-seven, it's eleven point four nine percent. Put the math where it... So we'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at that by the time we come back.
That seventy-seven is existing?
Sorry?
All of the seventy-seven.
No, no, oh, yes, they're all existing, they're all existing.
That's the exact number that's existing.
Well...
Basically, whatever is theirs exists.
Yeah. So, this is, uh, this is the proposal. Uh, this is, um... This is, this is the existing, yes. This is the existing building, this rectangle here. Uh, you come in off Cherry Lane, and there's parking up on the north side, parking up on the south side, parking in front of the building. Uh, there's a nice circular, uh, entrance for, uh, you know, for whatever, uh, and, you know, certainly can accommodate deliveries. Uh, loading ramp is proposed for over on this side at the far end. Uh, we're also, we're, we're proposing an L-shaped dormitory at the rear, uh, and also proposing to have, uh, another driveway, basically for emergency services. Okay, we're gonna have a hundred and fifty or so people living there at one time, and we thought that we have three hundred sixty degree access for emergency vehicles. This, uh, dormitory is a hundred and, almost a hundred and thirteen feet from the lot line, and the driveway is about seventy-six feet from the lot line. So there's, there's, there's lots of room, uh, to provide screening and protection for this neighbor back here, which will be the, the closest neighbor.
Do you know what's behind you? Is it residence?
Yeah, there's residential back here.
Dome, dome.
Dome?
Dome, I understand.
Also domes?
Yeah. Yeah.
Basically, it's, it's wooded, the whole thing, all the way.
Is the dormitory one-story or is it...
Two stories.
Two stories.
So that's, that's the basic proposal.
Is the footprint of the original building, ten to the original?
No, the building is staying.
The footprint is gonna stay?
The, the building itself is, the building itself is staying. The building itself is staying, and will be renovated within.
The whole front stays, the fire, everything stays. The only thing was changes in the adding this, so basically you have to clear some trees to burn that building, everything stays.
And so it's nice and tight with the existing disturbance.
Is like a many parent-teacher conferences or anything like that going on throughout the year?
This is second, this is, it's a secondary school.
They have a high school, too.
Yeah.
I know what you're getting at.
Was it ninth, ninth, what we, we would call like ninth through twelfth, or essential, so what?
No, this is the Smith.
Oh, so it's, well, they're eighteen and older, seventeen and older.
Seventeen, seventeen to twenty.
Ah, okay, okay.
Seventeen to twenty, yeah.
Do the boys drive?
So it's... Yeah.
Now a marriage.
Yeah. Okay.
The she was existing.
Is it cool? Is it cool?
No.
It's just both, just boys, not married.
Uh, one other thing that I wanna do before we get into agency comments and question, and further questions, um, traffic study was done, uh, as of August 22nd, level of service beat after, after completion and after full occupancy.
And it was, was, what was it done?
And now what is it? Now, it's, if it's, if it's beat, if it's, you know, it's...
If it's drive down now, you see thirty cars by, it's gonna come down.
Yeah, so it will probably be, it will probably be less traffic on a, on a daily basis, and certainly less of peak hours.
In the gym.
Yeah.
So how do the students get, do they get dropped off, and then they stay there until they leave for holidays and whatnot?
Yep, yep, so four days a year, there'll be traffic. Maybe six.
Could there be how many cars, a hundred and fifty maybe?
Maybe a couple more.
Is that a curiosity?
But come by bus, this is, it's, it's, it's twice a year, basically.
So how does that work? I'm a student, where do I go to get the bus? How reality? How do it work?
I mean, how they get a bus?
Well, you said you're gonna bus them, so...
If they're coming from wherever they're coming, if it's from Brooklyn or from wherever, they, they count, they beat the pickup, or we have to give you a pickup, they're giving that pro.
The bus will drop them off, the city bus will drop them off at the...
No, it's the city, but if this is special, you see the bus.
Uh-huh. Okay, alright, so the school sends a bus?
The charter of bus.
The school's gonna send a bus.
That's what I'm gathering.
We'd like to know.
Is that what happens now?
Yes. Okay.
Ah, so a lot of the words are matter of fact.
This is just kinda confirmed, I think. However, many times it's gonna happen, just like to know.
Sure.
And the school operates twelve months a year?
She, she, um... Twelve months a year? Eleven months.
It's all four, they have three that are one, two, what?
Well, did you say twelve months?
Eleven months a year.
It's like, you all...
Two weeks of this.
Two, two weeks, sorry.
Two weeks of the summer.
Alright, so, so basically a month around the high holidays, two weeks in the summer.
And I pass it with that, there. That's before the summer, yes, right?
Uh, two weeks more than the end of the summer.
Two weeks at the end of the summer?
Yeah.
Always, whatever, no, it's, uh... Okay, so nine and a half, um, when the yeshiva boys are not there, can you come and use the building for anything else? Let's get out, smoke camp?
And the parcel is over ten acres?
Yes, it's ten point six two. Ten point six two, yep. So it's, it's a, it's a nice-sized campus. Yeah.
I think it's the first school that comes with a little size purpose, besides UTA.
Listen, they don't need any variance.
Yeah, I understand.
We designed it, we shouldn't have, that's why we made it L-shaped, we shouldn't have to, we have the bump.
Soon as other ones be too close to the neighbor.
Yeah, we want to stay away from...
Okay, yeah, listen, saves you a few meetings, and it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Go from one to the other, you're good.
What are we doing tonight?
From the dome to the, whatever they call it.
Daylighting?
Yeah.
Uh, we, 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 well, what, what...
You can, you can wave the ready in the back, you go, so whatever.
We can, uh, we can, we, we do have some comments from, 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 uh, from your consultants.
Yeah.
Uh, for the mo, for the most part, we don't have any problems with them, with the exception... Uh, we, we don't have any problems with them. Uh, I, I wanna point out, uh, that your traffic consultant has reviewed our traffic study and found both the, uh, impact statement to be and methodology to be acceptable, and he agrees with the parking, with the parking reduction. With respect to, uh, the comments from Fusco and, uh, from, uh, Mr. Fuller, uh, we don't have any issues.
Sorry, just to cut you off, sorry. Going back to the traffic report for Ernest and Pope. He claims he needs a hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. For the dormitory. And this is a more recent one, the one I have from our fellow first.
Yeah, but that's, that's what, that's, that's what, yes, that's, that's, yes, but that's what the code says, no, no, no. That's what the code says, the code requires a hundred and twenty-six, um... So where did I get that other number from? Dad, where did I get the, I got the eighty-seventh from, from somewhere. Alright, so if it's a hundred and twenty-six, if we require a hundred and twenty-six, then we will need a variance. Then we will need a variance, I, I don't know where I picked up the eighty-seventh from, I'm sorry.
Existing building, maybe.
Okay, I did not put the Fusco memo in the package, that was from CDRC. I thought we were gonna get an updated comment.
Is that, what?
The, the Fusco letter that, that Mr. Gudansky responded to from September 9th, that's when they went to CDRC. I usually don't put the CDRC items in. I thought we would get an updated one for planning, so that would be there.
Alright, in any event, we didn't have any issues with what Mr. Fusco, uh, said at CDRC. Uh, we do have an issue, uh, with the, um, fire inspector's letter that was received today.
Sorry, let me pull that up. Not the fire department, you said the air and fire inspector. Here we go.
Right, and, yeah, the fire inspector's letter. Okay. Uh, let me take care of the things that we, we don't have a problem with. Um, they wanted us to, uh, to, to do a turning radius maneuverability for a specific truck. Uh, we'll have, we have no problem doing that when we come back, that'll, that'll be taken care of. Uh, it's the first two paragraphs, the first two substantive paragraphs of the inspector's letter, um, where he, uh, seems to, to, well, he misunderstands, or he misreads the code, the fire code. Uh, and, uh, especially with respect to the apparatus road, where he says that we, that because the ridge, uh, is over thirty feet high, we need a fire, uh, we need an aerial apparatus access road. Now, the, the code does say that if your building is taller than thirty feet, you need an aerial apparatus access road, which is twenty-six feet high, and it has to be a certain distance from the building, et cetera. But what the code also says is that when you've got a pitched roof, you measure that thirty feet from the grade to the eve, not to the ridge. And measured to the eve, it's well under thirty feet. So we'll, we'll get a letter from the architect with respect to that, uh, and point that out to the fire inspector. Uh, there's also a question with whether or not we need two means of, uh, apparatus access for each structure, and I think that that's the same error that he's made, uh, with respect to that, but we will have our architect get in touch with him, uh, and, uh, and straighten that out in time, in time, so when we come back.
You were okay with the Chalman Fire Department?
Yeah, sure, yeah, it's not a problem. That's not a problem, it's...
And I think the only other letter, I checked today, I didn't get the J and L or anything else.
Well, I wouldn't think it would get a J and L right now. Did you, was it sent out already?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I sent everything out, but I put the workshop date and the public hearing date in January.
Okay, great.
So I think they go by the public hearing.
Okay.
But the only one we did receive was the Rockland County Highway that I sent you, which a lot had to do with the sidewalks.
It was basically where the side, the front, front.
And then he went back and forth, he's saying, well, you didn't vote, so you're planning and, okay, 'cause I questioned that.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with County Highway as well.
Thank you.
But, but we have, but we, we will provide a sidewalk. That's part of, uh...
And gave them money for the, uh, the...
Yeah, yeah, so there will be a sidewalk provided along Cherry Lane, along the front.
As we circulate for environmental review, shouldn't we have a long form on this?
What?
Because of the nature of the project?
If it was vacant land, I would agree with you, but what we're talking about is we're talking about, uh, an enlargement of an existing facility, basically building, uh, an access road and, and a, and a, and a new, uh, extension on it. Uh, if you really wanna, uh, if you really want a long form, I'll give you a long form.
Well, um, I'll...
It's an unlisted action, I, you know, so a short form is...
It's permissible.
Permissible, yeah.
Let me look at the regulations and I'll, I'll see if I, um...
Yeah, good luck.
Pardon?
Good luck.
No, it's not gonna give me a, a decisive answer on it, but it is an unlisted action, and, you know, the, the nature of the use, the commercial use, you're really going from one commercial use to another, but I don't know that we have, it's not, the building's not being used for that pre-existing use right now.
That's correct.
And you're basically talking about the construction of a school which will have people living there, which is different from what the prior use was, and...
Clearly, absolutely.
I just wouldn't want us to get snagged by any reviewing agency saying, you didn't give us enough information.
All, all, all I would ask for is that you let us know quickly.
Um, I, I think it would be a prudent thing to give us a little more support. When we send something out, we get substantive comments, and nobody's lacking information about it.
Not a problem, I'll get you an FBI.
Can't believe I'm gonna ask this question, but you need a hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. You say you need thirteen, and everyone's being bused, and we can waive only twenty-five?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, yeah. So that's ninety-six.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get them to their number.
There's nothing else we can do to, you know, make it look better than vacant parking spots in the area.
So I think, you're saying it would be a compelling case for a variance?
Well, I'm just saying, it's just something the planning board can do without going to the zoning board, just, is that just twenty-five, and that's it? We have no other legal.
That's our, our criteria in the code.
Yeah.
Like I said, I can't believe I'm saying this. I can't believe I'm saying this, I'll say it again.
Another absolute...
Just for, you know, how it looks from the aesthetics.
Well, well, Mr. Cornelius, uh, you are allowed to give a recommendation to the ZBA when you gave the referral, so there's your opportunity.
Maybe thirteen's a little...
I don't think you're allowed, I don't think you're allowed to.
Ninety-four might be a little heavy, right, so...
Three ways how they calculate the parking.
Right, so they really have to figure out how much parking is required.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We hear the number eighty-seven, so...
The, the reason why is because there's about four ways. If they need to put per bed, then they have these two boys over sixteen years old.
They'll figure it out.
It's either or, it's the same boys.
And just go for it.
Yeah, and I apologize, I, I misread something somewhere when I originally said...
Okay, when you come back, I'm sure it'll be...
There's time to fix it. I'm just saying, there's just something we can do to make it look better.
Yeah, no problem.
What about the, um, in that letter from the fire inspector, what about the elevator requirement, the last thing?
We'll take a look into that. That's, that's, uh, our architect, our architect is here, is not here, so that, that's an architect issue.
Okay.
And that's not a site plan issue, by the way.
Right, building code.
Right, but it will, it will be on the, on the plans, and you never know what else it might affect, so... Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Is there an elevator in the building now? What?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
Okay, so, so somebody asked what we want tonight, okay? We'd like, uh, the board to classify the action, uh, we believe it's an unlisted action for secret purposes, and we'd like to declare your intent to delete agency.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
I have a, um, I have a question, um, I'm looking on the map, and I see that from Dome Road, it seems to be like a road for easements.
For the town.
Backing up till the...
For the town.
So it's not a public, so it's a private easement?
No, it's a town, basically, I want to show it, it's somewhere over here.
Right.
The town between two less has a paper road up to this property.
So it's not for public access?
If the town wants to make a road, but they, we have to give them that, actually, so they can.
And for now, it's, it's closed off with the fence?
It's grass. I don't even know the neighbor who lives over there, they, they cut the grass and mowed the grass over there.
We don't, we don't even know. We have no interest in going up there.
Yeah, I know, we're not clearing the woods, but we want, the least was clear, the way, we wanna leave it the way it is.
So there's no landscape plan, uh, to bid it yet, right, but they, um... We didn't want to change it. Bumper between the commercial and the, uh...
Well, as I said, we've, we've got approximately six feet between the lot line and the driveway.
Probably just gonna need to show the...
Yeah, that's what I'm imagining.
The trees, the existing trees. You know, we put landscaping in there, we're gonna have to put down trees.
Yeah.
I think your proposal's gonna be, this is sufficient.
Is there any sign proposed?
We don't need any signs.
I'm just asking.
There's an existing...
When they bring those to architecture, is when they start realizing they want a sign.
There is, there is existing sign.
There's an existing sign.
There's actually existing sign, uh, if we wanna change the la, the letter, the wording much.
They're gonna leave this out.
It says the gym now, we might change the shiva, whatever it is.
Because if you do want any signage, it's a good idea to take care of it.
There's an existing, there's an existing sign.
You okay with that?
The wording will change. I don't know, maybe you wanna keep it the same and, you know, maybe that, that way nobody, that way nobody bothers you.
No plans for it at all.
Um, I don't know, Mr., uh, sorry, what's it?
Chad.
Chad, hi Chad, you're new, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, you agree it's an unlisted action?
Sure.
I think we saw that somewhere actually, that it usually is, so, just confirming, um, okay. Any other more questions?
No.
See more with the project.
The question is, you might do that.
Your, your vote would just be, um, to declare this an unlisted action and authorize a notice of intent to be sent out to the involved agencies.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll make the motion. We'll declare the, uh, the motion is to declare this, this, um, as an unlisted action under secret and to direct counsel...
Authorize notice of intent to be sent out to involved agencies.
Well, yeah, okay, the...
They want to be lead agencies.
Yeah, the notice of intent to be circulated, want to be lead agency for secret.
And then the applicants gotta do their public hearing and they'll be back when they...
Well, the next, the next...
We need a public hearing here.
Yeah, they, they need to, they need to do their notices and schedule a public hearing. And we can tell them when our meeting dates...
No, and we're not, we're not, we're not...
We don't need, we're not adjourning this unless they want to hear...
We're just, we're just, uh...
So you don't schedule the public hearing by the board?
No.
We, we, we can advise you that you can be on the January twenty-second meeting.
Okay.
But we're not sending you there.
Gotcha.
We're not adjourning.
Some, some boards, some boards...
We don't do that workshop, so...
That's all right.
You got the addresses here.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's send it out, we have another month.
The next planning board meeting is January twenty-second, we would have to do it, 'cause I'd have to get newspaper three weeks before the meeting.
We'll do tomorrow.
Okay, so you'll, you'll do this afterwards. By the meantime, Suzanne, we made the motion, we'll second it, we'll approve it.
Yup.
Okay, that's it.
You're gonna have to do a resubmission, and instead of the normal two weeks before, you should do it at least three weeks before, so that I have the right information for the public hearing.
Okay, done, done this in one before, so...
Well, no, like, the description of the number of parking spaces, something that goes in the public hearing.
And so, like, an updated narrative?
I think, I think the narrative...
And the narrative actually says...
The narrative actually was correct.
The narrative says the right number.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's twenty-six.
Yeah, it was just I picked something up this afternoon when I was, when I was preparing.
You looked at the, the amount of boys and then you didn't look at the dormitories. There's two, there's three criteria which is for the same boys, which doesn't make any sense.
I was at the wrong row, yeah. Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I am, but I need to get my other file.
I'll leave, yeah, I'm not leaving tomorrow, but I'll...
Thank you, thank you, good night. Here you go. Well, thank you.
I'm gonna hear now. This, this is from Blue Rail. This is, uh, their response to the Muncie Fire Department comment made today. You're welcome.
Alright.
Joel? Joel? Make sure you call...
I'm back. Who's the answer?
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I have for the latter. This, this is, this is, all of this is, they were stuck on emails.
That's a good point. What did, what did you say?
It's a lump shot. Oish, usapalugis to bitiksh. Bitiksh na kriyazin? Confirmed kumadu? Kanchkoyim kumadu?
Over waiting?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I've ever been acting, I've been excited.
As far as I know, Michael was gonna put it on the agenda. And you know, a lot of...
Yeah.
He was more thinking, pushing, pushing, pushing. Yeah.
But he's open to...
He's open to be pushed.
Yeah, he's open to be pushed.
So, would I just...
No, no.
It's...
Yes.
I don't know what she, uh, applies to.
Yes. Yeah.
One of those needles, too. I guess it's last time.
Now, were you ever gonna get those traffic lights?
Yeah.
I figured it was longer than God could hear.
No, I, I...
Ah, I wonder, I wonder if they thought that the, uh, rule would show up later in the, uh, in the meeting. Okay. It's interesting because, because of the way it works with the public hearing. The, uh, the neighbors only found out about it like a month ago. Okay. Okay, so I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing for Blue Real Estates at four forty-four South Over Road. Second?
I'll second.
One favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, Mr. Manuel.
Good evening, you're Dan Ira Manuel.
You've seen this project once or twice, I'm not mistaken?
Yes, we have, we have. So we were, uh, we were last here on October twenty-eighth, and it looked like we were this close to finalizing everything. The public hearing was closed, uh, but we had not yet gotten a final review from the Architectural Review Committee. We now have that, um, as of yesterday?
Yeah.
Last night? Okay. Yes, yeah, 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 he did, he did, I just don't know where I put it.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
There it is. It's this. So, yeah, so we, we got a, uh, we got it, uh, uh, the approvals, um... Bottom line, A R C expressed confidence in the project's readiness for the upcoming planning board meeting and indicated that all previous recommendations have been addressed. They noted that new beautiful street lamps have been added and the plan overall is satisfactory. So, we're happy with the A R C, the A R C is happy with us. Um, so that, that takes care of that. In the meantime, we received a letter from the Muncie Fire District dated this morning. Uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bianchi here, um, to address it, because he knows a lot more about this stuff than I do.
Sure, so I believe the board was provided our written response to the letter that they issued today, and I will go over that, and I can go as fast and as slow as you want, but I will, I will go slowly through the letter. So there were, I would, I would categorize it as five topical areas that the, the fire department commented on, and had to do with the maneuverability plan, which is attached, and I have a full-scale plan here.
Okay, we're just, we're just, you're talking about this site planner you worked from the Muncie Fire Department?
Yes, dated today, we, I think we received...
And you have a response letter?
Yes.
Do we have those?
We provided to Susan.
Yes, I, I came out here and I put...
Is that what you just put on my...
Yeah.
Yes.
Pardon?
And it has a plan, but I couldn't print it because the plan was...
I have some trouble.
Yeah, the last was, it was bad.
I can only print the two pages.
No, that's this. What's this, the one that says M J?
Yeah, and then there's...
Oh, you're from M J?
I am from, from Bianchi, I apologize.
Okay, no, we've seen a lot of people from M J, okay.
So I will go over them one by one. So the first question had to do with maneuver, maneuverability plan, and we did not use the correct vehicle. So what we have done is updated the vehicle, showing that the vehicle still continues to provide access. There was nominal difference between the wheel radiuses, its turning radiuses and length, but the results are identical to what we had presented previously. So, we have addressed that comment. I know Suzanne has actually provided this letter to the fire department as well, so...
But they haven't gone back to us yet?
Well, in the time that they gave the letter this morning at eleven A M, we responded by three P M.
You, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad, I'm glad you raised that. We have been working on this for well over a year.
Mm-hmm.
There have been plans that have been sent to the fire department, we went through scoping, we went through a D E I S, we went through an F E I S, we went through a special permit at the, at the village board, we went through the variances at the, uh, the Z B A. Okay, you know what we heard from the, from the, from the fire department in all that time?
Not much.
Gornished.
Sounds like they just hired someone.
The set was dropped off in September.
This guy knew this Benjamin Fromer?
It was, it was literally dropped off by our code enforcer, who is part of the Muncie Fire Department. He brought it in.
Yeah.
How long ago?
In September, when we got the first big six, revised set for the first, um...
And, and nothing has changed.
And nothing has changed. We, we, we got a letter early on from them, you know, way, way back when, they had a couple of questions that they, that, so, a couple of concerns, May twenty-two of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that was their last.
Year and a half ago.
Is when we got their first response?
Is when we got their, the, the last response.
The most recent, you mean?
Well, the most recent before this.
First and last one.
From Muncie Fire Department, a year and a half ago.
The only time they commented.
And, and, and we complied with everything that they had, okay? And now, all of a sudden, this morning, at the, at the, at the last minute, okay, we get this nonsense.
Okay, so let's, let's go through the nonsense piece, please.
That's the same issue with four fifty-four, they got the approval and then they realized they didn't, they never gave the village their new truck turning things.
That was the issue.
They, they, they didn't do it for...
Sixty years ago.
So maneuverability plan, we have fully addressed that comment without question.
Okay, sorry, I'm just, just to drill down, the, the old, the truck that you...
It was their old truck.
Was how big?
It was probably like two or three feet shorter. The critical thing isn't length, it's its ability to make the turning radiuses.
Okay.
So, we've used the truck mildly that he gave us, we've demonstrated that the turning radiuses, the outcome of the analysis is no different than the previous one. The trucks can fully access the site as it did previously.
Fine.
So the next question, our comment, had to do with the fire access to the Southwest Community Room. So, this is the one in question, this community room down here, and if you pulled, if you go to the third page of this letter, it sort of shows you. So, we acknowledge that that road from here to the building is greater than a hundred and fifty feet.
That's how they calculate, from where the last...
The closest intersecting road.
Uh-huh.
From here to here is greater than a hundred and fifty feet.
Right, the, the issue is that the fire truck is not allowed to back up by more than a hundred and fifty feet, right?
So the, the way we are addressing it is we are invoking or using, um, from figure D one oh three one of the Uniform Code, if you look at on page three, we circle the one that is an available means to provide a turnaround. And then the next page is showing how we accomplish, accomplish it and fully comply. So on this plan...
Is that what's called a hammerhead?
It's, it's an alternative to a hammerhead. So, when we spoke last time, this plan had a small pump station here. That is no longer needed, we're able to do everything by gravity, so we will shift the trees. And, and the figure that I've attached basically puts the hammerhead or the turnaround here. And by positioning it, it's a hundred and six feet from that intersection, then about a hundred and forty feet to the, to the front of the building.
He just made it.
So we've got, we've fully complied with that provision. There's a second provision in the fire code that's gonna invoke section five oh three one one, where it says where the truck, the fire apparatus access road has to be within a hundred and fifty feet of all sides of the first floor. And if you show, you see the dimensions on there, we show from a point of a vehicle being parked there, it's no more than a hundred and thirty-six feet from either direction, without any obstructions to get around.
That's what, like, those...
It's from the front of the building, right?
It's from the fire access road, doesn't matter which, wherever you put...
The fire truck is getting to the parking.
Correct. But doesn't need to...
Oh, so he's gonna be back in there, right?
Back in. There is an exemption under the fire code, article three one one, that says when the building is sprinkler, that hose length or that axis of a hundred and fifty feet can be extended. We're not asking for, for the fire code official to make that, that determination. We are fully complying with the code as proposed, with the figure that we've attached.
Yet, you are sprinkling this, this building?
Yes, all buildings are sprinkled, the community rooms and all the residential buildings are sprinkled. So with that, we have addressed the fire access to the Southwest Community Room. The fire department also requested the twenty-six foot wide road. Um, the, the Uniform Code doesn't require it for our project. All our buildings are under thirty foot and according to the, the average grade plane. So, there is no need for aerial apparatus access. Alls are required to do by the Uniform Code is to provide fire apparatus access, twenty foot minimum, we have twenty-four foot. In their comment letter, they acknowledged that twenty-six foot isn't required. So as the alternative, they say, hey, just do no on-street parking. We had already committed to this, to the board last meeting, that there is no on-street parking and we would sign it with no parking enforced by the H O I. So, our plan already has built in to what their alternative to the twenty-six foot wide road is. So we believe, we fully complied with it, we do meet the, the minimum requirements of the fire code for that. The next one is fire lanes. They have requested fire lanes on the roads and the parking lot. We'll provide fire lanes anywhere the Uniform requires it. And then the last question was about sprinkler systems. As I've already communicated to the board, all buildings on this project will have automatic sprinklers. We will show where the fire department connections are with the final plan, subject to the village's fire code officials' review and approval, which is typical as, as you near a final construction or final permits, we have no issue with that.
Right, right, the connections are not site plan issues, it's building and fire code issues.
Uniform code issues.
Can we have a map note stating that all the buildings will be sprinkled?
Yes.
Because this, this memo says if required by Uniform Code, it doesn't say they will over-sprinkle.
We are committing to that, that all, all buildings will be sprinkled, and we will add, add a map note.
All buildings to be sprinkled, is that what you want?
So as Mr. Manuel said, you know, the timeliness of the review was unfortunate, but I believe we fully responded to them.
Can we, um, can we make a condition of approval that the Muncie Fire Department gets back to us and concurs that their new fancy truck can turn around on this project?
You can make it contingent upon their confirming.
Okay.
I mean, that's, it's a manual...
You don't have to take your word for it?
Yeah.
Unless if they can't turn around, you want it to turn around.
Oh, absolutely, well, yeah, we, 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 that's fine.
Confirm, confirm, confirmation...
Yeah, she said, yeah, I understand.
I asked them if they wanted a hard copy to let me know.
Yeah, okay, so, yes, we will consent to a condition, we will consent to a condition whereby the, the fire department... whereby the fire department confirms the turning radii, or, excuse me, the turning template, uh, as, as, as now shown.
Okay.
Well, don't they have to agree to all these things versus just one?
No, they don't, they don't have approval authority.
In, in the village, this is a question for the code official, the village, who, who dictates requirements of the Uniform Code? Is it the fire department or the fire? Is that the inspector or the, I mean, who dictates code requirements?
Fire inspector.
Mm-hmm. Not the fire department. We're not trying to overrule them, but we're trying to conform with the Uniform Code, and that authority resides with the code official.
Is contingent upon...
So that would be Mr. Maker's...
Lucky us.
To the Muncie Fires Department. I also think they have a newer, newer, 'cause I've gone through like three or four people in the last year.
Yeah.
No.
Understood.
This new B I is, it's state father.
I think he's single.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, and with that, I would ask if the board is in a position to grant final approval?
Question, second, um, just the second item on the agenda, I'm, I'm sorry. The second item on the list also from the, uh, Muncie Fire Department about this, um...
Access?
The access, yeah, a hundred and fifty foot.
That would, that would be, that would be, that would be a fire inspector confirmation.
So he'll confirm this works?
Yeah.
Okay. Fine. Um, GML?
Did last week, last time.
The late, the letter dated October twentieth, and we did go over that last time, they didn't have any issues with it.
Right, okay.
You do have to approve the signed plan, and I could.
Oh, wait, wait, hold, hold on a second. Uh, on the GML, we did request an override with respect to comment number thirteen, requiring a DEC JD for wetlands.
In the front? Yeah.
So, we're nowhere near the wetlands.
That's new?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
How many of it? Can I take a few people? So, moving the wall back to the inside.
Maybe to apply the law, that's an easy case.
It really does.
If, if we're greater than a hundred and fifty feet from a.
The air mine wetland is a hundred.
Yeah, we are, we're nowhere near, no, we're greater than, we're greater than a hundred and fifty feet from. Yeah, we're definitely more than a hundred feet.
Right, yeah.
We showed that last time.
Yeah, last time. You, you were here last time?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, so we spoke about that.
So, so, so we do need that override to comment number thirteen from the county planning department.
So, let's pull that again.
And the, um, the rationale for that was put on the record at the October meeting.
Yes, correct.
That the jurisdiction is not, it's not applicable.
Oh, there's the wetland thing, right.
Yeah.
Went through these, right? Okay. Fine, um. Okay, so Mr. Freedom was pointing out some changes, some, um, updates to the site plan, the monuments?
Yes, I think you go over that with the ARB.
Yeah, but the planning board has to approve the site plan.
They, they have the site.
Yeah, I took a copy from the ARC with it.
It has to be on the site plan?
Yes, they're, they're showing, one is there.
And the correct size?
One is there, yes, we, we show them per, per, per what's proposed.
There's a picture I took from the ARC and, yeah, and then if you flip the page, it gives the dimensions, which is why the planning board has to approve it, it's, it's more than the, the standard SAD code. So, the planning board has to approve it, and they filled out the application and paid by the sign.
And how many of these monuments are they gonna be, just one?
Two.
Two.
There's gonna be one, one right there, and then one right there.
Then you have these staggered posts.
Yeah, one of these posts? Or the fence?
They would, they would.
It's nostalgic.
Come in here, sort of like just columns.
On the inside, well, this, oh, this is going here.
Into the site. They're more of an architectural element, they're not a sign.
Okay, and the sidewalks?
Isn't it on the outside of the property? Outside of the road?
Oh, okay, yes, I, I got it wrong, so they're, they're, they're running this way, yes, they are there.
Ah, so that's the side of the.
And again, it's just an architectural element, it's not a sign.
It's missing sidewalks.
You have sidewalks.
Yeah, we have sidewalks all along.
Is that shown on the site plan?
Oh, yeah, we, we always show those sidewalks.
There was, there was missing on this. There's a sidewalk.
Yeah, but here it doesn't continue.
But here it doesn't continue. To this end.
We can definitely continue.
The rendering doesn't reflect.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Noble, the site plan should reflect the, uh, the sidewalks already.
What it was, it's just extending the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that was noted in the ARC memo.
Yes, it's part of the memo.
Yeah, we would definitely do that.
If I were to describe that additionally as part of the narrative in your resolution of approval, how would I describe what needs to change on that plan?
Is it just?
Add additional, add additional sidewalk along Saddle River Road, north of Road B.
So, the.
To the northern property, to the northern property line.
My property, and south, it's not rolling?
No, we do have it down there.
That's sure.
From the intersection of Road B to the northernmost property.
Road B to northern.
Okay. You want us to?
Let's go.
He's in a rush, man, he was in a rush. No business.
No, no, I think we just completely forgot to add that.
Got it.
Okay, um, anybody signed to speak? Nobody?
No, no one signed to speak.
I'll make the motion to.
We already.
The public hearing was closed.
We closed the public hearing?
You did.
Yeah, we did, I, and I put down the continue, it was my.
Yeah, we, we did close it?
We did, we did close it.
Oh, so nobody's coming out.
Make sure the minutes say that.
So, I read that just before.
Maybe John wants to speak, or someone?
He can speak without.
What? Okay. Don't rush, don't rush. What? You might, I thought my. Um, Todd, Chad, sorry, what was it, Chad, right?
Chad, yes.
Any, uh, any comments?
No, no further comments, as they addressed everything from our previous.
Okay. Lou, anything?
Nope.
Mr. Noble, anything?
I would just point out that, you know, I've been sort of curating the lists of correspondence, um, it's probably too numerous to read out to you, and we already did that in large part at the, um, public hearing, when we ended the public hearing. So, I think I've got a pretty good grasp on these, uh, conditions. If we could just make reference to the specific aspect of the sign approval that you're granting, it's described on, I think you have two color sheets that describe the signage.
I put it on my.
Is it in the, not in the ARC memo, the details of the?
Um, well, the ARC can approve the dimensions and the number of signs, they can just approve the look of the sign.
I just, when, when I, when I say that the sign, uh, plan included, uh, as a part of the site plan, is approved.
Two monument signs.
Two monument signs, okay.
They follow these dimensions.
And then the dimensions are.
You want the dimensions?
They're right here.
Shown, shown, shown there on.
Yeah, and this, I don't know, this was called for this sheet.
Which is beyond the normal sign code.
The aluminum letters, the two inches in height, it doesn't, uh.
The normal sign code is, it has to be higher, and you have to be able to see under it, so that's not even.
It's what, six foot, three inches high to the top of the coping?
Both the sign code.
Okay.
Oh, the streetlights, the, the streetlights, the streetlights on the, on the site plan?
Yeah, on the five of the site plan, yes.
Okay.
Is this whole thing called a sign?
The sign, yeah.
You know what I mean, it's called a sign?
The locations and also the areas. No, not to approve it.
Just on the houses, huh?
Oh, okay.
But you just, you should realize what you're actually approving.
Sure, beautiful sign.
And I don't need to say anything, go ahead and approve it.
Oh, all the corners?
Yeah.
Uh, the lights in them, the lights in all the intersections, including the intersection of Saddle River?
Uh, if the county permits it, yes.
Those are all new?
Yeah.
Okay, so those will be, those will be.
Right, because you remember the last board meeting, there was a discussion about lighting and the light.
Right.
The lighting was minimal, that, that has evolved, so we will provide it at the intersections, and if we can do it at the county road, and the county permits it, we will definitely do that.
Right, okay, we have the fence along, um, Iroquois?
Yeah.
And I think someone requested no, no rear lighting on those houses there?
Yes, and we, we had actually already previously proposed that fence, so that was a comment.
Okay.
Um, the lighting was a question, but we did show them that, um, this is like a valley, so these houses are actually probably lower than the houses of concern over here, there's more or two residents, I can claim about that. And the limit of lighting would be an exterior light, not like a beam, but something on the back.
Nothing, it's just, just house lighting, it's not street lighting or.
It's not massive street lighting or, or glare lighting, no. Compared to what's probably there now is security lighting, that's not what's, this is just a typical residential wall.
Right.
It needs to be somewhere in the HOA or something that shouldn't be able to change, that shouldn't, to put up like huge lighting to light it then, to neighbors.
Well, whatever, I mean, you, you could do your house, it wouldn't be the right thing to do, but, uh.
The, the lighting, they can only have the lighting that's shown on the lighting plan, so they can't just put larger lights on at a later date.
Got it.
I think that's just saying, let's say, some individual homeowner decides to put this gigantic LED to, to light up his whole backyard.
Sure.
Like I could in my house.
You're saying in the HOA bylaws.
Right.
Just a note, it should be a good thing, that's it.
Recommended by, uh, number one, the help. Okay, um, any reason we shouldn't vote now?
Let's talk about the sign for a minute, so Lou, what do we authorize, what is in the code for signs?
One freestanding monument type sign, located in a lot facing on each front of the street, directed by the planning board. Total sign area of twenty square feet in each area, located at least fifteen feet from the edge of pavement and not within the designated street line, the top of which shall not be higher than four feet above the average finished grade.
So, they're showing four feet.
No, they're showing six foot.
It's six foot three, I'll agree.
To the top of six three?
Mm-hmm.
Why do they say four feet?
Concrete copings.
Oh, that's the old sign.
Four inch.
Four inch, oh, I see.
What?
So, you're approving fifty percent higher than what it states, and fifty percent in terms of area, because it's ten by twenty, twenty square feet.
You know, four by ten.
Four by ten, really?
So, it's a lot bigger than what we.
It's two, about two feet taller than it's.
I'd say it's bigger by fifty percent.
You wanna sign that big down?
Again, on these very large projects.
And they're old people, they have a hard time seeing anyone.
So, we need lighting, but they're young.
I saw them, I saw the old people in the picture. You got it, the cane?
Is it okay? Lou, this is you?
Lou?
Oh, so the person, he added, they added some to the ARC, I think.
Just to give the board a perspective, you know, we've, we've worked it out.
Is this you?
We've said that we sort of mimic this project after I view.
Right.
It's the almost identical size sign that they had.
They also have this.
And it, and it's not, and I'm not forming an opinion or bias, um, it's not obtrusive.
And again, I will remind you, that's in Ramapo.
Yep.
Different code.
It's in Ramapo.
Therefore?
Lou, do you want this sign or no?
I don't care what you do, you just have to realize what you're doing.
Where does it make a difference how big this sign is? Like, it's, it's a monument, it's a part of a building, but.
And that's not part of a building.
I mean, not part of it, environmental or, where does it make a difference for safety?
Only, only when you're driving by and seeing and looking at the sign.
I, I, I'll, I'll remind the board that when this first came up last month, it was the board that said that they wanted a monument wall, they wanted a, a statement entrance.
It's not that big.
The board said that.
Wow.
We can, we can vote on that. So, let's vote on that, let's see.
That'll be wrapped up in the whole, in the whole.
Okay.
Approval, so.
Is the sign separate?
You don't make separate votes?
The signs, the signs are part of it, and that's why we're.
Are you guys okay with a sign that big? I think it should be smaller.
Difference doesn't make.
Because once you do one, everybody wants a big sign.
Who has such a development?
I think, like we said, when.
Everybody wants, trust me.
There's not much of social health.
Like signs, you have to play their actions, you know.
For the sign?
Walmart can.
Not in residential areas.
Walmart actually made the sign smaller.
I don't. Residential areas.
It's a big project.
Yeah, it just makes sense, like, if you go and, and randomly, you might have holding it again, communities that all have something like.
Yeah.
Questions for the height, they have this height on them.
You okay with five feet?
I'm okay, whatever, six feet is also.
All right, five feet, I'm good.
It doesn't make.
Five feet.
Five feet?
I get, I get that with those different side.
Okay, so they're reducing the size, that's the height of the monument signs to five feet.
Okay.
And that's, uh.
That's a sacrifice.
Wonderful.
Negotiation.
Comfortable.
It was a compromise.
Look, you're saving money on materials.
That's right.
That's right. Four and a half, right, four and a half. Don't push.
So, that's for both monument signs, yeah?
For both monument signs, reducing to five feet.
Now, does that affect the height of those pillars, then?
Five, five pillars, they're all scaled, so they'll, they'll scale down the same.
Is it five foot for the pillar or five foot for the sign?
Well, they gotta scale.
To the top of the coping for the sign.
Why is the?
It's just, it's just a graphic, you know, it's probably just, it's not structurally.
It looks beautiful.
Yeah, I know.
No, we'd have a full.
Two bears.
Two bears?
Well, I'm sorry, there's, there's a school right across the street, so it's a little bit different, you're in a residential neighborhood.
Well, add a school across the street.
It's gonna come. I'll be about it, I counted them, there's twenty.
Okay.
Okay, there's nothing further, I think we're ready to vote, yeah?
I think we're ready to vote.
Okay.
I'm good.
So.
So, your motion on this is to approve the site plan, and, uh, it's based upon the most recent submission, plan dated, um, November.
I think we should change the name to.
Yeah, there it is.
They, they don't change the name.
Sorry?
Most recently revised, September ninth, and, um.
Two thousand twenty-five.
I think the simplest thing would be to refer to, except as modified by the agency specifically, um, to refer to all the conditions that were provided in the, um, agency reviews, and to authorize council to draft a resolution listing all of those, to, um, override condition thirteen in the GML letter, uh, based upon the DUC not having jurisdiction over wetlands.
What's the date of that letter? Actually, I have that.
October twentieth.
Okay.
And, um, to approve the sign plan that's included as part of approval on the condition that the sign be reduced to a height, maximum height of five feet at the, to the top of the coping, and, uh, further condition that all sprinklers, all buildings are to be sprinkled, uh, further condition that the fire department is to confirm that the turning radius is satisfactory, and, um, the further condition that the, there will be additional sidewalks along Saddle River Road from, uh, Road B, as shown on the plan, to the northern property line, this will be added to the site plan, um, and all of the conditions that we recited as a part of the record in the, uh, national meeting, public hearing.
Yeah, one, one other that was discussed today, and that is, uh, the fire inspector to confirm the turnaround.
I, I did state that, I said the fire, that the fire department's gotta be happy with the, um.
Yeah, that's, that is.
That's the maneuverability, they're talking about that access.
The fire inspector, uh, confirming that the turnaround.
The hammerhead thing.
That's been provided at this, at the Southwest Community Room is, is acceptable.
To confirm turnaround at Southwest Building.
Right, that's how the community was, one hundred feet from the intersection. And I'm sorry, the, the, the streetlights, was, was it, that's already in the plan?
We're proposing that, yes, yes, that would be part of.
So, the streetlights also, that, uh, the streetlights that are at each intersection and.
And Saddle River.
And so, they're to get their approval from the county. And that's where, that's in the, uh, AS, those.
The streetlights at the intersection and on the county road, if the Rockland County highway occurs.
Do we have to get specific with, where, where are the, where are these streetlights found? They, they came from the ARC?
They're, they're on.
They're on plan, right?
They're on some plans.
They're on a plan, and I know that I came up with it, that was a discussion.
I think they're already on the plan.
The streetlights are on this, on the side?
Um, I, I, probably on the landscaping plan, that would be.
It's on there?
It is on the landscaping.
All these.
Okay, so they're on there.
It's here, it's here.
Yeah, so Mr. Noble, they're, they're on there already, and this is the landscaping sheet.
Can you, can you do me a favor and look in the revision block? I think those were dated newer.
This is the newest.
The lower right hand corner, or sorry, the lower left hand corner.
Nine oh nine.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's nine, that's what we have, nine nine.
Yeah, nine nine.
And the community center is gonna have its, its own lights.
Yes.
They don't need a three plant light.
Okay.
They're, they're on, it's nine nine twenty-three.
Nine nine.
That's what, that's.
Finding, yeah, that's fine.
Nine nine twenty-five, what?
Finding, exactly.
The findings can, uh, FDIS.
Yeah, the whole, yeah, the whole.
That covers everything?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Good, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make the motion as, uh, stated by Mr. Noble, I'm gonna repeat everything he said. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So, we're approving the site plan, and, uh,[1662.33]